For the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, Retaya Edith Brown. She was a teacher at Wappingers for many, many years before her retirement. And I'd also like to take a moment for all the victims and the families in California fires. Pledge of Allegiance.
Item 3.02 Superintendent Spotlight DC Bosie Students of Distinction.
Thank you very much, President McFarland, members of the Board of Education and members of the Wappingers Central School District Learning Community. We are very proud this evening to recognize the Duchess County Bosie's Student of Distinction, who happens to be a Wappingers student. I would like to commend Duchess Bosie's for being a phenomenal partner in education. You do tremendous work with our students and provide them with services that we are currently unable to provide them with, but that they need so direly. So with that, I call up Mrs. Saffaric, the Assistant Director of Special and Alternative Education, who is going to speak about the individual who we are honoring this evening. Thank you and welcome to Wappingers.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. My name is Corinne Saffaric. I'm the Assistant Director of Alternative and Special Ed at Duchess Bosie's. And we are here for Aleah Kaiser, who is our February Student of Distinction. So her teacher, Anna Makovich, could not be here tonight, but I wanted to read what Anna wrote about you. She thinks that you're wonderful. We all do. Aleah Kaiser is known for her quiet and reserved demeanor, yet she has demonstrated remarkable resilience in adapting to her new school environment, including new classmates and teachers. Aleah consistently showcases her dedication through the timely completion of her assignments and active involvement in her integrated classes. Her character is marked by kindness, care, and gentleness, and she positively influences all those around her. She openly expresses affection for her classmates, her teachers, and her family. With her positive attitude and gratitude for life, Aleah represents the qualities of an outstanding student and individual. So we're very proud of you. I also wanted to thank Superintendent Dr. Bonk and Wappingers School District for the opportunity for our continued partnership. It's always wonderful to work with so many wonderful Wappingers students like Aleah. And I also wanted to acknowledge the Vice President of our Board of Trustees at Duchess Bosie's, Gully Stanford, is here tonight. Thank you to the board for all that you do in enabling us to continue to run incredible programs designed to meet the needs of all of our students. So Aleah, do you want to come on up? Or you want me to just hand it to you? It's hard to stand in front of a lot of people. I understand that. You don't have to come up if you want. I can just hand it to you. You want to do that? There you go.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the staff at Duchess County Bosie's as well as Vice President Stanford for all of his work. And again, round of applause for Aleah and Duchess County Bosie's. Thank you and congratulations, Aleah.
Okay, moving right along. 4.01 Public Comments or Agenda Items. Anybody signed in for public comments?
I can't use Google Workspace because required Gmail settings are on these settings.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to listen to public comments. Although the state law does not require us to hold a public comment session period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a debate or a dialogue. Do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have significant time to process and research issues. If need be, any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of public comment form, which may be obtained online or at the desk of the district clerk. We will have a proper staff member get back to you as soon as possible. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to address any comments, questions about specific students or school personnel. We ask that you go through the appropriate administration channels. A total of 30 minutes at the beginning of the board meeting is set aside to allow for public comments and agenda items only. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited only to the items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in public comment portion of the meetings are asked to provide their name and specific agenda items about which they will speak. A sign-in sheet is located at the desk with the district clerk. Individual comments on agenda items is limited to three minutes and are welcome. If you wish to address items related to our school district that are not on tonight's agenda, another comment period is provided at the end of the meeting for that purpose. A second sign-in sheet is available for non-agenda items. In this, in the interest of civility and respect for the different points of views, clapping, booing, or any disturbance during either public comment period is not permitted. At this time, comments related to agenda items are welcome. Gully from DC Bosie's. Thank you.
Good evening, President McFarland, Superintendent Bonk, trustees, Madam Board Clerk. Thank you so much. My name is Gully Stanford. I'm here to speak to item 701 on your agenda. Although I'm not a resident of the Wappingers District, I come down from Hyde Park, I have the honor of serving on the Board of Trustees of Duchess Bosie's along with your admirable president. Thank you for sharing him with us. He is a vital member of the Board of Trustees of Duchess Bosie's. This is an election year for our president, Ralph Cimento, and myself. In fact, there will be three vacancies, and we'll leave it to Clark Pedro to explain how that all works out. You get a chance to vote in April on the, on your, on your preferences. At this point, in the next couple of weeks, you get an opportunity to make nominations. And I'm here to say that having had the honor of having served now for five years, I would very much appreciate your nomination and ultimately your support in returning me for another three-year term. Greatly appreciate your support in 1922. Couple of highlights just in passing. First of all, a huge debt of thanks to the Wappingers Schools. You are phenomenal partners. Back at you, Dr. Bonk. You are phenomenal partners to the Bosie's Witness, if only just witnessed the success of the PTEC program, which really wouldn't have taken off without your support here in Wappingers. We greatly, greatly appreciate that. And I always like coming down for the Skills Trades Fair, which you so brilliantly host for so many students. And then a couple of your trustees I have the honor of serving with on the Advocacy Committee for the Duchess County School Boards Association. So really appreciate the relationship and would be greatly honored if you would be kind enough to consider me for nomination and for your vote in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Gully. 5.02, 5.01 Superintendent's Report, 2025-2026 Preliminary Budget Presentation by Dr. Bonk. Dr. Bonk, please.
Thank you, President McFarland. Very nice. No. Nice, right? So the 25-26 Preliminary Budget Presentation, Building Our Future Together. That has been our mantra this year. I'm going to give you some preliminary numbers as to where we are. We're still unsure of exactly what our state aid will be, although we are pleased with the current aid that we see from Governor Hokel. And based upon that number, we are working on crafting priorities for the upcoming school year. And when I say priorities, they're not my priorities, they're not the board's priorities, they're not the senior staff priorities, they're not the building principals' priorities, they're not the teachers' priorities, they're not the staff's priorities, they're everybody's priorities, including our community. We all work together. So for those of you who have gone to budget at WCSDNY and put in your suggestions as to the types of programs that you believe that our students need and deserve, thank you and please continue. And if you haven't, you got any thoughts and suggestions? We still have time. Please send them in. Members of our Board of Education, President Michael McFarland, Marie Johnson, Trustee John S. Morgan, Trustee Peggy Kellin, Trustee Keith Odoms, Trustee John C. Lumia, members of the Senior Staff Administration, Darren Loquima, Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Information Systems, Dr. Michelle Carl, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Kristin Dainty, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Business Development, Richard Zip, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, Renee Harris, Executive Director of Human Resources, and Ronald Broas, Director of Facilities. And of course, our district clerk and the senior assistant to the superintendent, Ms. Alberta Pedro. So what does our timeline look like for budget presentations? Well, on 11/4, we put out the video to the community explaining the budget process. Today, February 10th, here we are, Preliminary Budget Presentation 1. A video will be coming out in a couple of weeks that will explain the budget process that will be in English and will also have a presentation in Spanish. The 10th of March, Recommended Budget Presentation 1, as well as our Transportation Proposition Presentation. April the 7th, Superintendent's Recommended Budget Presentation 2. And hopefully by then, we will have a state aid update presentation. The 22nd of April, Recommended Budget Presentation, Ballot Presentation, Budget Adoption. May the 5th, Ballot Presentation to the Community, John J. High School. May the 12th, Community Forum, State-Mandated Public Hearing on the Budget, that will be at Royce Ketchum High School. So let's talk about the priorities, all of our priorities. We want to continue to maximize the resources that we have to benefit our schools and our community. That is why we're here. How do we do it? We maintain our current educational program. We provide academic support, academic enrichment opportunities, and extracurricular activities, as well as professional development for our staff. We continue to focus on safety as well as the emotional and mental health of our students and our staff. As Vice President Stanford said from Bosie's, continued support of career and technical education programs. We've only started. We've got much more to do. And of course, it's all contingent on the New York State aid finalization and the budget deadline is April 1st. Budget vote, May 20th, 2025. How was it developed? Mission and core values, Board of Education values and goals, as I said before, senior staff discussion and goals, community input. Let's share with you some preliminary numbers. It is my goal and objective, as I've said for the last four years, to come in with a budget that is below the tax cap. That will be the case this year, I am pleased to say. So the approved tax levy was $190 million last year. This year, it's going to be $193 million. So you will notice that that is an increase of under $3 million. And the levy-to-levy increase for taxes will be 1.5%. More information to follow as we continue to work, and I want to thank Ms. Crandall and all, Ms. Dainty, excuse me, and all of the members of the Senior Staff Administration for working together, along with the Board of Education, to comb through the copious amounts of information that we have and the statistics that we have to be able to deploy the resources where they best serve our students and staff. The next virtual event, as I mentioned, Superintendent's Video Explaining the Budget Process, February 24th, 25th, excuse me, 2025, English and Spanish. All community members are invited to learn how we gather the information to develop the annual budget, use estimates in the budget, and arrive at the final budget numbers proposed to the voters. Prior years, I should say, budget information is available on our website. How many years do we go back? At least five. So if you want to compare and contrast, feel free to do that. I need to move on to the next slide deck. Yes. Hold on one minute, please. Thank you.
So is that 5.02?
That's correct.
Facilities Needs Assessment Summary by Dr. Bonk and Mr. Loquima.
So it has come to my attention over the last month or so that there seems to be a lot of propaganda in our community about this potential capital project. And I think it's time that we set the record straight and we provide facts, as opposed to opinions or research, various studies that have been done. The bottom line is, whether we're going to grow or we're not going to grow, and we're going to grow slightly at the elementary level, we cannot provide the programs and services that we need for our students in the elementary schools today. So whatever happens over the next few years, which we see a slight growth in enrollment, it's going to be a challenge. We had a senior staff meeting this morning, and I was looking to add two language-based positions for special education students. I may not have room. That's for next year. Where are we going to be in three years? Where are we going to be in five years? We'll talk about it. I'd like to thank Mr. Loquima for all of his work on this document, which is the Facilities Needs Assessment and the district-wide need for a capital project to maintain the necessary programs and services for all students. So as I mentioned, and this will be going on the district website tomorrow, I have asked Director Shouten to make sure that this is filmed. So this will go on the district website in addition to the WCSD video page. So our community can just click and they can see this presentation as well as any discussion that occurs after, because I want to make sure that everybody's question is answered and answered with facts. So let's take a look at the factual information, the need. Student needs have outgrown the current fiscal space at our elementary schools. Integrated co-taught classrooms are at capacity at all elementary schools. Students who live in a school's boundary and in need of an ICT program now must enroll in a different school, which means they're not going to their neighborhood school, which I don't think any of us want. To expand the self-contained classes at the elementary level, which we need to because our students need those services, we again have an issue with being able to put them in their home school. No longer can we say we have one or two programs, one on the north end of the district and one on the south end of the district. That's not right. That's doing students in service, students and families a disservice. So if you have multiple students, one of them is going to go to one school, the other one will go to another, but if the parents want both of them to go to the same school, they have to go to the school where the Special Needs Program is being offered, which means that you could have multiple people who are not in their neighborhood school. It's got to stop. UPK, it's been a great program. We've done reports on it. It shows that how our kindergarten students have been excelling more than they ever have. We want to bring UPK to our nine elementary schools, which hold kindergarten currently. We want to create bilingual programs to serve the increasing numbers of English-language learners, in which our district has had one of the largest growth of English-language learners in Duchess County. We want to add communication classrooms with sensory spaces. We don't want 26 students in a kindergarten ICT class. We don't want that. And in some buildings, 25% use music and/or art on a cart due to a lack of space. That's, that's as of today. More facts. District contracted with Western Suffolk Bosie's to conduct a comprehensive long-range planning study. Below are some of the findings, facts. The demographics of the community are changing. Enrollment levels will remain relatively flat for the next 10 years, but there will be a slight increase at the elementary level. But again, remember, we don't have the capacity to run the types of programs that we want in our elementary schools today. There are a large number of residential projects in the application phase that could bring a large number of families into the district. These projects were not included in the study. The study only includes projects which have been fully approved by the local municipalities. I'm going to ask a question, Mr. Loquima. I don't know if you have the answer. So I'm sorry for putting you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot.
Go for it.
Do you have any idea how many projects would fit that criteria that are possible that could impact elementary enrollment? And which schools particularly might that impact more so than others?
Sure. I could think of four big projects. By, by, I say four projects doesn't sound like a lot, but we're talking about hundreds of homes. So they're mostly in the East Fishkill area and would undoubtedly affect what boundaries such as Gayhead Elementary and requiring us to possibly redistrict and then affect maybe even Brinkerhoff or Fishkill Plains, depending on how the borders have to move further north and to different catchment areas. But that's where the majority of the building is, yes.
Very good. That's why we need to build our future together. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Loquima, who took a great deal of time and effort to come up with the Facilities Needs Assessment and the elementary capacity constraints. We've identified the need to expand academic programs for an increasing number of students with rising needs and challenges. We all can agree on that, but we're not able to accommodate these programs due to a lack of space. These are real-world examples today. Mr. Loquima, could you go through this chart, please? And you'll notice that classroom usage is at capacity at every elementary school. Mr. Loquima?
Yes, thank you very much. So I will not read every one of these, but give you a general idea for, for each school. So as Dr. Bonk had said, we are using classroom usage in all schools, and we, we have a need for additional expansion in a number of different locations, but we don't really have any options to provide that. So Brinkerhoff Elementary has an integrated co-taught class program service, K-6 classroom. Every classroom is being used for instruction now. We do have construction being completed on, at the end of Merritt Boulevard as part of the, as part of Van Wick Muse, I believe the project is called. They got another 113 townhomes being built. We're going to definitely see an increase in student enrollment based on that, when that, when that construction, which is already underway, underway is completed. Fishkill Elementary, there are two modular classrooms, you know, not attached to the building that are used for UPK, UPK classes now. Those modular classrooms have been in place for almost 20 years. And so by the time this project comes to fruition, you got to imagine that they will be well past their life usefulness in 2029 or so. So that would mean that we would, at a minimum, have to shutter the two UPK classrooms that are housed in those detached classrooms, as that program would no longer be able to be housed there due to lack of space. The Fishkill Plains Elementary has a couple of interesting issues. They have a K-2 self-contained continuum. That's a 15-1 class, special class for students. And, and they, then, once they get to third grade, there isn't enough room to do grades three through six at Fishkill Plains Elementary. Once they get to third grade, they have to leave Fishkill Plains Elementary and go to another school to finish their continuation of services there.
So would you say that these students will go to Fishkill Plains, have to make another transition to another elementary school, then have to make a transition to the junior high for two years, and then transfer to the high school?
Sure. It actually might even be one additional transition. They might have started kindergarten somewhere else and then were then assessed to needs for a self-contained class, and they'd have to then go to Fishkill Plains as maybe a first grader or a second grader for the first time entering that school. They're there for one year or two years, and they can't even finish there. They'd have to go to a, a third elementary school just to finish their, you know, K-6 academic career, if you will.
And this is reality?
Reality. Happening now. Also with Fishkill Plains Elementary, there is, that is one of the, the most challenging spaces we have for class size. I think what has happened is the redistricting of Hopewell Glen at Large Development over in East Fishkill.
Do you know when that occurred? What year?
2018, let's say, or so. And, and that redistricting and rezoning at Fishkill Plains Elementary, and they finally finished construction there, I think, has finally caught up. We're seeing class sizes that we did not expect, certainly not, did not expect it two years ago. We're seeing increase to the point where in the fall, we're going to have to close the two UPK classrooms at Fishkill Plains Elementary just to make space for a couple more sections to keep class sizes down where we can.
And that's something we know right now?
Right now. And? Sorry. Did you want to go back to that? Hold on. I think you hit the stop button.
Oh, I don't want to stop. I've just got started. Hold the phone here, everybody, please. We're, we're back in run. Go ahead, Mr. Loquima.
Okay, great. So Gayhead Elementary, another school that has some interest.
833 students.
Yes, sir.
Pretty large for an elementary school.
Large school.
One of the largest in the region.
Very large.
Okay, go ahead.
Has a, has a self-contained program. It is language-based. It's a slightly different program than we talked about, but it is only a three... It's a slightly different program than we talked about, but it is only a three through six. So some, there's some students that are entering Gayhead for this program. That'd be their second elementary school experience, uh, in their K6 career. Has the integrated code talks, K6 class, also has, is a third component, uh, of, of more recently added components are English as a new language program. The school is using every classroom space as is, as it is as well. Um, again, this is the conver, this is the school we talked about that definitely has the most, uh, in, possibly impactful future development in, in our area. A couple of things worth noting, uh, the ENL teacher, that's English as New Language teachers, provides support to students in one of the school lobbies. Uh, AIS support-
They don't, they don't have a classroom. They, they do their work in a lobby.
They do not have a dedicated academic space, uh, currently, no.
And this is one of our growing populations?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, AIS support is provided in the hallway often. The adaptive PE tech takes place either in a hallway or cafeteria. Uh, the school psychologist uses the stage as an office slash testing area for students and, and they must plan around lunches so that evaluations are not, uh, interrupted.
So what happens if a student has a crisis during lunch?
Right.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, and this, this, there is a growing need, as Dr. Bonk said, with regards to our demographic for students, uh, for English language students. Uh, we obviously our second highest, uh, our, our highest language, other than English being spoken in that program, is Spanish. Uh, and having conversations with Dr. Cardwell, uh, she could also really, uh, better explain this, that, you know, New York State requires, when you hit a certain number of, uh, when you hit a certain number of students in, in a, in, in your ENL program that speak a certain language, you are, you're technically required to create a bilingual program. So that would mean providing a dedicated space at a particular grade level for all students who speak that, that same language. So if you hit a certain threshold, you're supposed to have in, in a classroom, uh, that is dedicated for that instruction with a teacher who is certified for bilingual instruction for that program. And we don't have, we were talking about, we don't have the space for that. We can't, we easily have the population of students across our three schools that support ENL who speak that common language for which, who can benefit from a bilingual program, but we do not have the space to put it because that would mean we're taking a classroom out of a school who we've already noted has been used for, uh, is at classroom capacity as it is. So we can't add that special class or that bilingual program class. And then if we were able to put one in, we definitely couldn't guarantee creating a continuum for the next few years.
Which would, which would mean what?
Would, which would mean that you'd have a student then having to go back somewhere else or, or you have to, I don't even know if there'd be, I don't even know how you could disband a bilingual program. Uh, the, the state would probably have a hard time with that, to be quite honest with you.
And would you say there's a common theme in the areas that are being impacted in these elementary schools? Do they seem to be two specific areas?
I would say that the, you know, for program services are the things that are impacted the most and us having to make, um, you know, we're have to, we're going to have to make compromises in areas that we, we feel-
Would you say that they're primarily special education and ELL, which are two of our largest growing populations?
That is the area where we have to make the most compromise.
That seems to be the area that's in the comments at every school.
Supports outside the traditional classroom is where the space is lacking, yes.
And we've all discussed and heard of everything that's happening with mental health issues and special education and students' needs and they're ever-changing. We need to be equipped to be able to work with those students. And when I say all students, I mean all students. Go ahead, Mr. Loquima.
Okay. Uh, James Evans, very simple. It's a small school. It's a, it's a, it has self-contained full continuum there, K to six. Uh, no room for self-contained. If you ask the building principal, she would say might, you know, or not, sorry, no room for integrated co-taught, mainly because the school couldn't support, uh, the office spaces and classroom spaces required to provide the related services for students. So I thought that was an interest, interesting perspective, but we said to Mrs. Hernandez, hey, can we bring ICT over to your school? Um, she would, she would say, well, sure, but where would we put all those related service providers? Cause I don't have the room for that. Uh, Kinry Road, uh, they have a UPK class, uh, there this year in the fall. We'll be closing that space down as well because they have, uh, an increased need to, uh, to lower class size across one or two grades in that school. So he'll be using that last classroom space, uh, for maintaining reasonable class size, which is, which is obviously very important as well. Uh, Myers Corners has a number of interesting constraints as well.
Myers Corners now our largest elementary school?
Yes, it is.
Was it always?
No, it wasn't.
Why do you think it has become the largest elementary school? Have we had a lot of population growth in that feeder pattern?
Well, the biggest thing was actually feeder pattern changes. So the last big feeder pattern change we had was we, which should have been done as part of the original K5 configuration, but it, it, it wasn't for various reasons. Uh, so we had to do a course correction on it, uh, about probably five years ago, maybe six, where five, we had took all of Baxter Town Road, including Round Hill and, and, and the, the upper portions of Osborne Hill Road that were formerly going to Fishkill Elementary, and we put them over at Myers Corners Elementary, which was very disruptive for families. Uh, and we ended up, the board, uh, you know, rightfully so at the time, grandfathered a lot of those Fishkill Elementary families to stay, but they've all aged out and, and the primary, the, 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 the primary, uh, all those neighborhoods are now primarily going to, uh, Myers Corners Elementary. And, and it's done exactly what we expected it to do. It's become the largest elementary school in the district by enrollment. They have, um, they have part of their library, uh, this year had to be converted into space shared by two AIS teachers and a social worker. So they closed part, uh, they had a cutoff portion of the library to make room for those spaces. Um, one of the, one of the ENL classrooms is also used as a copier room. That's, um, you know, there's, there's no, you know-
For the, for the building?
For the building.
So during the classroom, people go in there and make copies?
Well, I hope not, but you know, yes, that is. Um, there's not enough, there's not, there, right now, there's a K two, uh, they just added this year, I think it's temporary, a three, four classroom for self-contained. Those students, when they're done with that self-contained program up and, up until, uh, fourth grade, will then have to go to another school for grades five and six self-contained. So that's very disruptive. Uh, the custodial office had to be reverted to faculty room, which is a smaller space, custodian. Now the custodians occupy what was literally six months ago, a bookroom, like a, like a closet in the main office area. So that's where their office had been. So I mean, kudos to them for trying to find the space, but, uh, they had to get really creative and unfortunately, uh, you know, they, they have, uh, they have, you know, less than ideal situations for some of the staff and programs.
Let me just say, in my opinion, as superintendent, it's absolutely unacceptable. Continue, please, Mr. Loquima.
Sure. Oak Grove Elementary has, has, uh, has self-contained grades one through six. So if you notice what's missing there, it's grade K. Students who, uh, enter grade one self-contained will be, uh, who started in a self-contained program in kindergarten would have started Vassar Road Elementary. So when they go to Oak Grove, uh, there will be, uh, that'll, that'll be their first change in elementary schools. And similar, they don't have an ICT program as well.
So if I can just ask you for the sake of transparency, did I have any involvement in developing this?
The way the schools and programs are now, no.
No, this document?
This document?
Yes.
This is a collaborative document.
But was I directly involved in it? Or did you work with the principals?
I worked with the principals.
Thank you. Can you move on to the next slide?
Chief Road, uh, Chief Road is now our third largest elementary school in the district. It does not have enough capacity for all students to take, uh, music and art classes in the classroom. Uh, there, it's, it's, if you figure every, it's a, a four-section school, so there's four sections of every grade in the building. Uh, you know, for, for just ease of explanation, basically the principal, the way they had to set it up was one class in every grade, uh, had to draw the short straw and have art and music on a cart. And that's, and that's been their experience for art and music and, uh, for this year.
Wasn't, wasn't that identified as one of the reasons why we made some changes before to eliminate art on a cart?
Yes, some, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there is, um, there is, there is, uh, in, it, you know, the, our long-term planning study that was done by Western Suffolk Bosse's, uh, will, uh, uh, you know, shows that there's actually going to be a COVID baby bubble, if you will. Uh, we have, uh, kindergartners will be entering, uh, school for the first time in September of 26. Will be about a hundred students higher than what we've seen in the last five or six years or even, even prior. We're going to see 730 some odd kids as opposed to 650 some odd kids or whatever the number is. Uh, and, and, and in Chief Road in particular, it's, it's projecting, uh, that odds are they're going to need another classroom for which they already, they already are at max and they're going to have to get really creative if we allow all that enrollment to go into Chief Road Elementary as opposed to perhaps redistricting or, or we, what we call overflowing students to another school temporarily till the space becomes available based on some sort of enrollment, uh, attrition.
You see that in how many years?
A, a year, uh, two, September of 26.
Right.
So-
Right around the corner.
Right around the corner. So, you know, a year and a half, right? Uh, and that'll be problematic because right now we, we basically just squeezed the last bit of classroom space to get them where they are for this year to reduce a classroom size. And if we don't do that again, they have sixth grade coming in next year as three sections. But based on what we're hearing from this report and what we're seeing historically, we're going to bring in kindergarten at four sections. And we, we need, that school needs to have one grade level of three sections to fit exactly the way it is right now, but they're not going to have that. They're going to have all seven grades, K through six, be a four-section school. Like, I mean, like one classroom short, so we're going to have to really look hard about where we squeeze that. And that might mean another, another, I don't want to, you know, want to, this is just a thought, it might mean another special area goes on a cart or one goes on a cart entirely.
Well, I think we need to be, I think we need to be transparent with the community in regards to what's going on today, right now.
Yeah, that's what's going on today, right now.
Okay.
Um, and again, this, this would be a great school to have a bilingual program for. Perfect, you know, it's, it would keep most of the students who need that service in their home school, uh, but there's absolutely-
Which, I believe is our goal. Isn't that what we want to do? We want students to go to school in their own neighborhood and go to school with the people that they live near and develop a community within a community?
Certainly. And, uh, in, in this case, we would not be, we, we know we can't put a bilingual program, uh, classroom dedicated for that. And then multiple years with the classrooms dedicated for that at Chief Road Elementary, that just isn't going to work. Uh, and then, and then Vassar Road, uh, as well is, is, is by, by comparison is in pretty good shape. Um, but the, you know, it would be nice if they had, what I've been told, uh, is a full-time sensory space to complement the communications class, uh, both. That would be the same thing for here, and I don't think I mentioned it at Kinry Road Elementary. Uh, but those would be, uh, programs that would at least, if you were to send a student out of district to receive the same services that they've received now in district, they would probably have a space like that in that out-of-district location.
So haven't we talked about for years, the desire to bring those programs that we send out in?
We have.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So with that being said, every school has interesting constraints, challenging constraints and, and constraints that we wish we, you know, didn't have to deal with due to just lack of space alone.
And this is based on fact?
Fact, today.
Okay.
If we were to, uh, uh, remove sixth grade from elementary schools, we just wanted to show how many classrooms might be able to be freed up in each school to give you a sense as to, you know, what kind of additional, uh, programs or, you know, number of, how much, how much classroom space we, we would be able to alleviate to provide for, um, you know, uh, the expansion of programs or to keep class sizes low. So we're talking about 33 classrooms, but another possible three, I say possible three because technically, um, you know, right now, if we want, we're running a, a full self-contained continuum requires four classrooms. So you have a grade K, a one, two, a three, four, and a five, six. Technically speaking, you could probably do a full continuum with three classrooms without, without trying to debate the merits of what a K1 SC class might look like, but you could have a K1, a two, three, and a four, five. So then a school like Oak Grove would be fixed immediately because their three classrooms that they use for SC right now would be automatically a full continuum. You could do it that way. Plus they still get the three classrooms back. Uh, there's just a lot more room to maneuver, uh, in, in, in removing sixth grade out of the elementary schools. And then this slide just represents some of the thoughts. This doesn't mean this is what would happen, but like, we could bring UPK to, to several of our schools, uh, quite easily. We have room to eliminate the modular classrooms at Fishkill and still support the same UPK classes there or, uh, some sort of combination of that and something else. We can expand a full continuum for self-contained at Fishkill Plains, for example. Uh, we can return, you know, we, we can make sure that there's room to maintain an appropriate class sizes at Gayhead, room to support a bilingual program, et cetera, so forth at Gayhead. Same thing with Myers and Chief Road Elementary. Uh, and it just, it's just going to help provide, allow us the space to provide the programs and services, uh, that we know that our students need and, uh, and, and, you know, the space that we just can't provide currently. And I think I'm giving you the clicker back.
Thank you, Mr. Loquima. Thank you for all of your work and, and finding that information to, to provide the facts as they are today. So let's talk a little bit about the projected cost of the project. It was presented to the board and the community on both January 13th and January 27th. Total projected cost of the 2025 capital project is 153 million plus. Approximately 67 million will be the New York State aid to be received over the life of the bond. Once the project has been completed and permanent financing has been put in place, and I, I believe that if this is approved by the board and then approved by the voters, it would probably be five years, correct, Ms. Crandall, until this project is done? And we just shared with you where we are now. Think of where we're going to be in five years. But I think it's important to get out accurate information that on an average home assessed value of $400,000, this is approximately going to cost a taxpayer $25.50 per month or less than a dollar a day. So let's say your house is worth $600,000. Well, it would cost $37 a month. It would cost a little more than a dollar a day. There's been some discussion about what should the middle level look like? And people have referred to studies and anecdotal information. Again, we're sharing facts. We have 13 school districts in Duchess County. Let's look at the, let's look at the middle level. Arlington has middle level six, eight. Beacon has middle level six, eight. Dover has middle level six, eight. Hyde Park has middle level six, eight. Millbrook has middle level six, eight. Pine Plains has middle level six, eight. Poughkeepsie has middle level six, eight. Red Hook has middle level six, eight. Reinbeck has middle level six, eight. Spackenkill has middle level six, eight. Pauline has middle level five, eight. Weebetuck has middle level four, eight. And Wapengers has middle level seven, eight. Please notice that we are the only district that has the middle level two grades, meaning that you make a transition as a seventh grader and then the next year, you're thinking about high school. So you're there for two years as opposed to three, and in some instances, four, and in some even more than that. So I'm not going to discuss with you the merits of putting sixth grade in one place or another because we could find studies that would support whatever it is that we feel is best. I'm sharing with you factual information. Now comes my opinion as your superintendent. My opinion. In order for the district to continue to provide and potentially expand the programs and services necessary to adequately meet the ever-changing needs of all of our students, K-12, this capital project is essential. It will allow for the necessary supports throughout elementary education, which I think we can all agree is the foundation of education. It starts in the elementary school. This project will allow for the following: reduced class sizes at the elementary level as we gain over 30 classrooms, the expansion of UPK in our school buildings as opposed to sending them out to other agencies or other locations. As our special education enrollment has increased by 4%, we have 10,500 students. We have about 18 and a half percent that are special needs. That's over 1,800 students. And when I say all students, I mean all students. We will have the ability to meet the need for those students and the continued development of special education programs and initiatives at the elementary level that we have worked diligently on building over the past four years in response to the COVID pandemic and other needs that we've all seen that are dramatically rising. English language learner enrollment has also increased and will have the ability to expand our ELL programs and services. to expand our ELL programs and services. The addition of grade six at the middle level will also provide students with opportunities to take higher-level courses in areas of interest and provide critical academic enrichment opportunities based on the offerings available at the middle level that are not offered at the elementary level. Based on the 21 building condition survey as well as recent legislation from New York State requiring schools to make temperature-related decisions in regards to heat potentially impacting classroom temperature, which I'm not going to say could, will result in closings, early dismissals, or delays, which all impact in-person learning. Much of the work included in the capital project will retrofit our buildings with the proper air handling systems to keep schools open in New York State when the temperature warms up, May, June, July, August, September. And for those of you who don't know, we have 1,000 students that participate in summer school in July and August. It's rather warm in July and August. Since our newest building was built in 1969, we have seen tremendous growth in the areas of extracurricular involvement among our students over the past few years. These opportunities for our students outside of their regular classroom activities are critical to the growth and development of our students as human beings and as people. In addition, we value our relationship with our community to provide our facilities, which include athletic fields for community usage. I know there are people in the community that want to utilize these fields, but because we don't have enough of them, they're not available for the community very often. We want to work together as a team. We want our student athletes to be able to participate and play on these fields, but we also want our community organizations, which serve as the foundation or the feeder for our athletic programs, to also utilize them. Therefore, the additions in the project at the middle and high school level are of paramount importance. And if it remains our goal, which I believe it is, to provide opportunities for all of our students, and this may sound familiar to some of you, to challenge themselves, pursue their passions, and realize their potential while growing as responsible members of their community, which is obviously our mission, that was agreed upon by the public over 10 years ago, this project has my full support as superintendent in its entirety. And with that, I welcome any questions from the board, and I want to thank you, Mr. Loquima, for all of the work that you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bonk, thank you, Mr. Loquima.
I need to ask for an extension of time. We're out, she asked me to ask when I was done.
We're looking for an extension for time for 15 minutes, is that good?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Second.
Any opposed? So moved?
Once again, this full presentation as well as the slides included will be on the district website tomorrow, as well as the portion of the presentation as well as the conversation that's going to take place right now. I want our community to be informed of the discussions and the rationale behind this project.
Marie Johnson, you have a question?
Yes. Dr. Bonk, Darren Loquima, do we know approximately the number of students that are in our out-of-district placements, placements that we might be able to develop programs for such as your Salt Point Boces, Northern West Hairs, those might be ones that we could bring back in? Do we have any idea? I have a few questions, but that's one of them.
Sure, I'm sure people do, that's the purpose of this. Mr. Zip, could you answer those, please?
Sure, so for our students out of district, I'd say we have approximately 250 to 300 across the district, so this year, for our school-age special education classified students, we have 2,160, so about that, 300 students, and going back to those programs like we do now, but, you know, should the building project be passed, we can increase our capacity for self-contained classes as we do now, we look to bring students back to district when we have seats available, and clearly increasing the number of seats and programs available will allow us to keep more students in district as well as bring more students back to district. And, and just so the board has an idea of, of course, per student when they go out of district, you're talking anywhere probably from $100,000 to $125,000 a student.
And how many students did you indicate?
Two fifty.
We have about, we have about 250, 300 students. Our costs as a district with all the day placements and residential placements probably hits about $25 million.
$25 million.
Okay, so, but the, the ones I'm considering, you're saying are approximately about $100,000, and when we do them in district, it runs us usually about 30-something thousand.
Well, think about a teacher in a self-contained program right now, that's a 15-1, that would serve two grades, you're talking 15 students, and you'd have a teacher and say two, two teacher assistants, three. Teacher salary, brand new, about $125,000, two teacher assistants compared to 15 students.
I should say that $125,000 includes benefits as well, that's not the starting salary, just so you're aware. Thank you.
It's, it's all the benefits. Also, one of the other questions, Mr. Zip probably be able to handle, currently, right now, we have the pre-K students that were basically subcontracted out to like a couple of the local daycares and St. Mary's, I believe. I was just wondering if we were able to bring them back, what's the current cost that we have for the pre-K that we're subcontracting out and what we're actually getting? Now, mind you, pre-K was passed by Governor Cuomo that we have to offer it, student, people do not have to register it, but we have to have it available by the district, and that was under Governor Cuomo, I want to say four years ago, I believe is my timeframe on that. So it's mandatory that we provide it, but not mandatory that they are enrolled just at the same as kindergarten.
Right, that's correct.
Dr. Cardwell oversees our UPK program. Dr. Cardwell, could you answer those questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we currently have over 200 students that are attending our off-site UPK locations. We have, we receive $5,400 per UPK student from the state education department. So that's what the state gives us, and that is what we give our community partners per student for running a UPK program.
So we're not paying any extra to any of these?
No, not to our community partners for the students.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Trustee Lumia.
First of all, thank you, excellent presentation. If I understand it correctly, there's no classroom available for the following programs. Namely, if you want to expand self-contained classes at each school, if you want students in ICT classes to stay in their home school and not have to travel, we want to expand our bilingual programs at every school to serve the increasing number of ELL students. My golly, my golly, my gosh. We want, we want to bring UPK in all our nine schools, and of course, we don't want art on the, on the part of the cart as well as music on stage. If this to happen, since it's a represent, we change the gate configuration, I assume. UK, UPK 5, I guess, 6, 8, 9, 12. This, according to the community, required 28 classrooms, if I'm not mistaken, 28 classrooms, 14 and 14?
About that.
Not about, I think it's 28 classrooms. As much as I totally agree with your recommendation, I mean, it's admirable, I think we need some, the community as well as myself needs some answers, questions to be answered. We presently have six teachers who teach UPK. How much money does the state provide, and we're told 5,400 bucks? How much money does the district have to pay to make up the, for the present six teachers? How many additional teachers must we hire for us to have UPK at the nine schools? What will be the total cost, district cost?
So I'm, I'm going to attempt to, we're going to attempt to answer them one by one, so you get the answers to your questions, okay? Does that work for you?
That'd be great.
Dr. Cardwell, if, if you could answer the first question on UPK, if you could repeat that question?
Yeah.
Trustee Lumia, thank you.
So far, we have six teachers who teach UPK. How many additional teachers will we have to hire so that we, all the UPK students can be serviced? And how much will it cost the district? How much money will it cost the district to hire all the additional teachers?
So if we have one UPK classroom in each of the schools, right, we're working on made-up numbers right now, it would be an additional four teachers that we would need in the classrooms at approximately $125,000 per new teacher. So that would give us about 125 times four would give us the amount, but this is rhetorical.
So all we have to hire is four teachers, you're telling me, right?
If, if we went with only having 10 UPK classrooms, we don't know how many students are going to register, we don't know how many classrooms we're going to have, if I went with just having 10 classrooms in our buildings, because we have nine elementary schools that do have kindergarten, that would be the 10. Plus, we would have a teaching assistant that we need in each of those classes.
Yeah, and if I can add something, Dr. Bonk, in Board Education?
Please do, Mr. Zip.
Once again, so, I mean, the, the district, we're all working it together, so if we think about a self-contained program and what we'd save the district.
Just stay with the UPK, so I have a question now for Dan in a minute.
But it's all connected to money. So it is, so, yeah, so it is. So if we think about a, a, a regular two-grade, 15-1 class, of all those students, we could keep 15 students in district and not have to go outside, that saves the district $1.5 million. So the cost that you would incur to hire a special ed teacher is nominal, and then whatever cost we needed to say, to fund other programs like UPK would be offset with one self-contained class that supports 15 students. By doing this and building two, three, four classes, maybe more, the savings could be, you know, $10, $10 million over the course of the school year, and clearly, what special ed would need to fund that would be nominal. So once again, so looking to bring programs like UPK into our buildings, all of this could be absorbed quite easily just by, by being able to expand your self-contained offerings at the K6 level. That alone is, K5, that alone is worth all of this, what it, what it brings to the district collectively. Thank you.
I, I did not, maybe I, I did not get the actual numbers for, you need four new teachers to cover all the students for UPK, correct?
Approximately five.
In addition to the six that we, we have six right now, correct?
Correct. So that would be approximately-
We have 300, so last year, we had 300 students that were going to apply for UPK. We could not service all of them, correct?
No, we can service all of the students.
We could not serve, so to service-
In school.
In, in, in school.
In school, right.
But if we brought them back, let's say we took all 300 students, we were able to bring them back, assuming we have classrooms available, how many additional teachers must we hire? It's got to be more than four teachers.
She's doing the math, give her two seconds.
Okay.
That would be if we took all 300 students, we put 18 students in a class, that's required, that would be 16 classes, we already have six, that would be 10 additional teachers if we were to bring all of those classes in our district schools.
Okay, all right, thank you. By the way, if this question cannot be answered tonight, that's fine, I mean, I just throw it out so the community will know. How many, again, how many more additional teachers must we hire if we have integrated co-teaching and self-contained classes in all nine schools? Right now, kids have to travel to different classes, we don't want that supposedly, right? The superintendent doesn't want that.
I, I certainly don't, I, I think we've been communicating that for years.
So my, I agree, I agree with you, the question is, the community has to know what it's going to cost so that each nine schools have these programs, that's important to know, so they can support it. I mean, I support the fact that we, I don't want people to travel, but can people afford it? That's a question that people have, ultimately, when they go to vote, they have to vote on these issues.
If I can just interject.
Sure.
We have said that it is our goal to provide the necessary programs and services to our students and be fiscally responsible.
I'd like to know just exactly.
So I will say to you that our students deserve the support.
I agree with you 100%.
They deserve, when, when, if you're talking about the average home value is between $400 and $500,000 in this district.
Dr. Bonk, I hate to tell you, I live in a district, and you try to find a home $400,000, you got, I tried to find a home, my son for $100,000, I couldn't even find one, the cost I gave is almost $700,000, believe me, the home prices in this district are really pretty high, that's just like-
So then I believe that the board has to make a decision as to what, what, what is the priority.
I agree, I agree. I think as-
That's, and, and, and it's, it's going to come to a point in time, and I've said this before.
I understand that, Dr. Bonk.
I stand up here this year, I'm talking about adding program, as I say every year, next year, I could be up here saying, we're going to have to subtract program because we don't have the money, but we have the money now, and these are things that we need, and I cannot justify not providing students programs and services that they need if we have the ability to spend the money. The district has not been in this position very often in its history. For a period of time, the district carried a fund balance of around 1%, and our current fund balance is at?
10% maybe, 10, it's pretty high.
12 to 14%. And I said to this community, and I said to this board, we're not going to spend all the COVID monies to spend the monies so that we say that we spent it and then not have any money left. We want to save that money and identify our priorities and deploy that money in areas that we believe best serve our students. So we have that money.
Dr. Bonk, I, I-
So, so, so if it comes a point in time when we don't have the money, then that means we have to cut programs and services, and if that's what we have to do, we'll do it. But right now is not that time, and I am not going to jeopardize the education of the students currently in this school district when we have the ability to do something to remain status quo and not grow to meet the ever-changing needs that they have.
Richard, you have a question?
Yes, I did, Dr. Bonk, in the Board of Education, if I can just elaborate on Trustee Lumia's statement about if you were to bring all the programs to each building, right? So if you think about it since COVID, I've, I've mentioned this to the Board over the last four years, we've hired a fair amount of special education teachers K to six to expand the ICT offerings across all the buildings that have ICT programs, mostly Gayhead, Myers, Chief, Fishkill Plains. When I first came here 10 years ago, having a double section of ICT to grade was rare. This year, we're actually going to have three sections at, at a building, so you can see the needs have increased. Going forward, if you had the opportunity to really bring students back to their home schools, you have a fair, good cohort of teachers who could be repurposed as students and exit your elementary schools and have them circle back and go back to their home schools. So if you think about Evans and Oak and Fishkill, which don't have ICT programs, those students are in other buildings where we had to hire teachers to teach them. Those teachers could go back and offset any future costs, so you're not hiring completely new teachers to support your whole K6 program. You've got plenty of capacity in there, how much, I couldn't tell you, but those students had to go someplace. So some of them could be repurposed as students moved up from fifth to sixth grade, and then you could slowly build out a complete ICT continuum across your elementary schools. Some of that capacity already exists because those students, so students needed services somewhere, and once you reached more than 12 students, you had to hire a new teacher anyway.
We're at a time limit, I apologize.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion for an additional 15 minutes.
20 minutes.
I stand corrected, 20 minutes, 20 minutes as per Mr.
So moved.
Morgan, all in favor?
Just, just, just-
Can I just say one thing before you continue? Just can you clarify one thing for me based on Trustee Lumia's questions? Can you please just reiterate, how many out-of-district placements do we currently have?
I would say approximately 250.
What is the cost involved for those out-of-district placements in terms of tuition as well- in terms of tuition as well as transportation costs within the special education budget?
I would say that the per student cost for a day program is probably about $100,000, $125,000 for residential students, it's more, per student. And that doesn't include the cost, which I'm assuming Mrs. Dente can indicate as far as transportation, because these students now have to travel far for day program.
Just throw a couple, throw a percentage on top of it. Is it 25 million, 28 million with transportation?
The overall cost is probably 25 to 30 million dollars.
If we were able, with the expansion and bringing in some of these programs back within the district, let's just say, how many students do you think we could bring back into the district? Half?
I don't know about half, but I mean, you know, even 10% is 2.5 million dollars. Right, so say more than 10%, 25.
Say 25%. So it's, okay, so about $10 million?
$10 million.
There's your savings and there's your money right there to help offset, because we're not spending $10 million for added district placements. Those students are back here, and the cost for those special ed students is not 100 to 125,000. Ms. Johnson, that could be 30, 35, 40, 45,000, or 50,000, or 50% of what the added district tuition is. So right there, we're not adding money. We're repurposing money that we're already spending within our budget to cover the cost. Does that sound correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. But let me continue with my question if you don't mind. The comprehensive long-range plan, which were given to us, I think, two weeks ago. The project for elementary enrollment 2034 is lower than the present. In fact, if you look at page 34, so overall enrollment is gonna be lower. And of course, the elementary enrollment is definitely gonna be lower. If that's the case, it doesn't include supposedly a new building that's taking place. I'm only basing what I read on this year. I can only go by this, I can't go by what may or may not happen. Well, hold on a minute, if you don't mind. We do not know how many of those students actually will be going directly to Gayhead, which is gonna be obviously affected, one of the western schools is gonna be affected most. Some of those kids might be going directly to, some of those kids might go directly to Van Wyck or directly to what they call, to John Jay High School. So we really don't know. I can only go by the projection, I can't go by anything else. Based on these projections, Dr. Bonk, the enrollment at both the high school level and the elementary school level is gonna be below what it is today. Okay, so just to make that a fact.
Well, let me respond if I may. I just shared a presentation that I think was about a half hour.
Yep, whatever.
That talked about where we are today and the fact that we can't add programs based on the number that we have right now. And I can't predict what's gonna happen in 2030 or 2034. But if you take a look at those numbers, it remains relatively flat, which means that the enrollment, as they project, without those potential projects, is gonna be slightly lower than it is now. And right now, we can't fit the programs in the schools that we need.
Unless there's travel to go to other schools to meet the needs of the students, which you don't want, which we don't want, I understand that. Now.
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
I have a question that relates to Mr. Lumia's question.
Trustee Migetz has a question that relates to yours.
Now, I understand your focus on the finances here.
I think we should all be focused on the finances here.
I believe too, that's why Dr. Bonk will tell you how many times I've said to him, keep any tax levy increase under the cap, if you want my support. But from what I heard Dr. Bonk and Mr. Loquima say was that while it looks as though in the projections that our enrollment will be level, there is an increase in the amount of needs for our students, particularly the increasing numbers of special education and ELL students, which means we are going to need more classroom space to be able to meet those needs because we'll be having pullouts, bilingual classes that will be mandated.
I would agree with that. And when you look at projections, what did the projections say in 2008? Did they say we'd be facing what we face right now in our elementary schools?
I don't know what 2008, I can only speak what we have in the plan from whatever age to 25 to 30, 2034. A couple of last things, and then I could take the rest to somebody else. Our present budget, our present budget's approximately $305 million. Last year, the budget, the budget increase was close to $18 million. Thanks to your idea of using cap, what do you call, the fund balance, we came below the test cap, which is great. Now we have 20, how much, 20, almost 20 million, how much do we have right now? In the fund balance approximately, $20 million? Pretty close to $20 million. This year's budget will be pretty close to $325 million, pretty close to that. If we approve the totality of the capital project, which is another $153 million, we're gonna be in a hole for almost half a billion dollars. Undoubtedly, we must use fund balance again this year. How long can we continue using that fund balance years from now? It boggles me.
You were, you were board president when we talked about using the fund balance and holding it.
I agree.
And that's what we're doing. And I, and I will say again what I just said, that if there comes a time where we don't have the money, then we obviously can't offer the programs.
Dr. Bonk, I agree, using a fund balance to come in with the cap. I agree 100%. My question is, how long can we continue this? I can see programs being cut right down the line.
I'm not, I can't predict what's gonna, I can't predict what's gonna happen in the future, but I can convey what the situation is now. That's what I can convey. I can't predict what's gonna happen next year, then maybe you can and I can't.
I can tell you, I'm concerned about our future of this district. And I'm sure you are too, you are, you're also.
You're concerned about the future of this district, where we've gotten a report from the Controller's Office for the past four years where we have not been successful to fiscal stress. Prior to that, we were. So I think that, that talks a little bit about the way we've been managing our money and the planning that we've utilized. And that report is a public report that anyone can, can look at.
Look, I think it's great to use fund balance, like you 100%. My concern's for the future, which is exactly what's gonna happen. Three, four, you're gonna be here three, four years from now, and you have to face those issues.
And I'm ready to face them, as I've said every year. Right now, we have the opportunity to build programs that our students need. If there comes a time where we can't build program and we have to potentially cut program, then we'll do it. But until that time, I'm not gonna jeopardize the current students' needs, their programs and services, because I'm afraid of what's gonna happen in two, three, or four years. That's not right. That's how you stay stagnant and status quo when you don't grow.
Well, I'll tell you, I am concerned about what's happening so far as charter schools, which is gonna affect, might affect our enrollment. I'm concerned about all these things, I'm sure you are too.
I understand that, but with all due respect, that's a might. We don't know that right now. A number, there's a number of hypothetical issues that are being bandied about that we don't have the answers to. And again, I'm referring to the current situation right now.
And, and my personal idea is we shouldn't be basing this on somebody's projected hypothetical situation. It's all about the students, and we have to do what's best interest for these students and bringing in these programs, adding classroom, lowering the classroom sizes is what's best for the students. That's what we need to focus on. I'm sorry, Trustee Slowshower?
Just a quick clarification, Ms. Dente, quick question for you. I'm assuming if this project is approved by the board to move forward and then approved by the public, with all the work that has to be done, I'm assuming that we'd be going out to bond in 2030?
We would be going to bond five to six years out, and at no point in time would the entire cost of the project have to be included in the general fund budget. It would be included through debt service and interest payments at that point in time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Kellen?
Thank you. I'm sure we would all like to do the best for all of our students. That is not in dispute. Everyone on this board is, ran for the board because they cared about students. However, the current situation in Washington leaves our finances extremely perilous. Both the administration and the Congress have vowed to cut almost a trillion dollars from the federal budget. Since the budget is over $6 trillion, mostly made up of interest on the national debt and defense, social security, and Medicare, that leaves only a little over $1 trillion for everything else. The president has said repeatedly he wants to abolish the Department of Education. Now, some aspects of it may be saved, who knows? The, he wants very much to go after Medicare and transportation and other programs. And his Secretary of Transportation has said especially he'd like to take them away from blue states that have low marriage and birth rates. Now, New York State will try to, I'm sure, will try to fill the gaps. When they lose money in these areas, they'll try to backfill. That will probably affect school aid, because we can only spend so much. In such an uncertain time, I think it would be wise to do this year as a project only the things that need to be done and have a separate project for the additions on the two junior highs and leave it to the voters to decide whether they wanna go for both projects now or want to defer it till next year when their finance, when the government finances are more stable. And that is, would be a sensible decision.
Thank you, Trustee Kellen. Trustee Migetz?
Yes, I noticed in Mr. Loquima's presentation that we have several buildings where we can't accommodate the special education-related services and AIS services in a classroom where we have students in lobbies and hallways. I have a number of concerns about that, especially since I believe we now have a new administrator who came in this year whose office space is all converted copier rooms. We have closets that are being used to accommodate offices. Well, when we look at these services that are being conducted in hallways and lobbies, these are areas where there's a lot of distraction and makes it difficult for students to focus. So I think that that is going to decrease the amount of benefit students are getting from these services. And then I have a further concern, because the majority of students receiving the related services have an IEP. We are violating their federal right to privacy because anyone who walks through the hallway and sees that the physical therapist or the speech therapist is with a student, they now that, know that that student is now identified as a special education student. And I have real concerns about that.
Thank you, Trustee Migetz. Mr. Morgan, we're down to five minutes, by the way.
Should I start now?
Continue.
In, in all sincerity, I wanna pass along several, several thank yous. Thank you for the presentation. And I wanna thank Trustee Lumia for, for putting the questions together, because our role is to ask these questions and to understand these issues so that we can, we can reach, reach reasoned decisions. Trustee Lumia, was, was one of your points earlier that you would rather see us not expand and then later cut programs that are based on, I'll say, grants or state, state aid and, and money that we may not be able to afford in the future. So you're not talking about cutting programs currently, but you don't wanna be overly ambitious now if, if, is that a fair?
That's, that's a very good way. You've got a better way than I'm saying it, yes.
And he says it in English.
You translate me rather well.
Okay, thank you. So, and, and I think there's a logic and a sense to that, right? Especially coming from, from a standpoint where you don't wanna go from, from, from the rich, you know, from, from riches to the, to the poorhouse. So I understand that, that point. There are some people that think that we should, should be more ambitious now and, and hope that, hope that the rainy day doesn't come. So, so that's a difference of opinion, but it's, it's a reasoned one that, that I think everybody can, can understand. Based on the information that was, that was shared with the, with the board and with the public before the meeting, but really presented, I just wanna say that, that I sat here over the course of, of the past month or so thinking to myself, well, when I went to elementary school, it was, was K through 6, and middle school was 7, 8, and that's, that's the way that it was. But I'll also say that when I went to John Jay, there were more students in John Jay than there are right now, and there hadn't been additions put on it, just to age myself. And my wife is younger than me, in case people are watching and thinking that she's old. So, so the point is that, that the different, the different programs that people have talked about and the need for, has, has expanded, right, the need for, the need for space. And I've come to the conclusion, you know, just speaking for myself, that, that we need more space. We can argue about how much or, or how little, but, but we need more space for, for the status quo. And I also think.
Two-minute warning.
I also think that the, you know, the, the data, which you pointed out that says that basically we've got like a little bubble, for, for lack of a better term, in elementary population that's gonna kind of work its way through. The, the project that is proposed for directly across from 376, which I don't think is gonna be built the way that it's currently proposed, but is for 468 homes, right across the street from, from Gayhead. If that gets cut in half, which, by the way, approximately half of 468 is what the property owner has been paying for as a member of the sewer district for close to, but not quite, 20 years. They're gonna get 200-plus units there, because if they don't, they're gonna sue the town. And the town doesn't wanna get sued. So let's count on 200 homes right across the street from, from Gayhead. We could go through other projects, I just happen to know a little bit more about that one, so I use that anecdotally. I, I think that looking at this from a sort of a bang-for-the-buck perspective, despite the fact that, that there are people on this board that don't feel like sixth graders belong in the, in the middle school, and let's, let's take them at their, at their word that they, that they feel that way based on their experience as a teacher, which I don't have, that I'll, that I'll, I'll take them for that. But if we're talking about spending money and we're talking about accommodating students, there's no question in my mind that as opposed to building new elementary schools, we're gonna get a more efficient use of taxpayer dollars by putting additions onto this building in Van Wyck and reconfiguring the grade levels than we will by pursuing some, some other means. I'll also mention to you that.
Time.
That I would like to make a motion.
Make another motion for 15 minutes of time. All in favor?
I'll, I'll wrap up, but.
Thank you.
When, when, when I entered this school district as a, as a student, space was rented in the basement of a church for kindergarten. And then when that kindergarten class, which was the largest class, by the way, that went through this district, close to a lot of years ago. No, no numbers, don't ask for the math on that, and my wife is younger. But, but the first grade, the first grade for people in Fishkill and East Fishkill attended which school? Anybody? So there was, there was a brand-new high school that was only in its second year of being opened in the 70, 71 school year. And there was first grade in John Jay. So we, we've done things in the past, maybe the distant past, but in the past that I think everybody would hear. everybody would hear here would agree that we don't want to do anything that, that drastic. And if, if we do need to expand the school district, physical plan, I think that the proposed plan is, is the most efficient way from an expense standpoint to do it, and that's, that's my opinion. I wanted to share it.
Thank you for sharing, Trustee Morgan. And your wife is younger, yes? Happy Valentine's Day. You're going to do well Friday. Mr. Capillaro, do you have any, Capillari, do you have anything?
No comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, Dr. Bonn, thank you very much for that presentation. It was excellent, very informative.
My, my pleasure. And again, we will have this posted. We appreciate your comments, your questions. If you do have any comments or questions, please direct them to the Office of the Superintendent, and our team will get right on it and provide you with the answers necessary. Thank you again, and I want to thank the board for this discussion. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for having these discussions tonight. This is the first meaningful discussion we've had, and I appreciate that. And I think the community appreciates it.
All right, I hate to go backwards, but I did skip over 4.02, so we must go back to 4.02. Communication announcements received by the Board of Education. Anyone have any? Let's move on. Marie Johnson, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would just like to say that over the last couple of weeks, Trustee Miggitts and myself have had the pleasure of going to multiple different games between the two high schools and junior highs. I know, it's crazy. We went to some basketball games and, and other games that we, we enjoy. We love our students in this district, and it is probably some of the best times I have, and the best conversations are with the amazing families in our district. During one triple header over at Royce Ketchum, we were able to also sneak down to the auditorium because Ketchum Racing Team, which we were able to get our, our gear, had movie night, and it was one of the best movies I've ever seen. It was a beginning of the Winter Circle Project from, before it started in our district. Very moving, and it was definitely worth the watch. We were seeing, I was able to go to the Science Olympiad and be able to see a bunch of those students and the amazing PTA, PTSA over at John Jay, who does a phenomenal job every time. The other night, I was able to attend the Italian Cafe Night at John Jay, and Mr. Lumia missed the food, and we missed you. We called you. It was totally missing, and, but I didn't win anything in the, in the things this year, but Trustee Miggitts did.
Well, as you know, my niece from Sicily is more important for food. I get my own food. I went out with my niece.
And then also due to the, the, the snowstorm, I was able to attend Willy Wonka over at Gayhead Elementary on Friday morning. And can I say, I've been singing Willy Wonka songs all weekend. That was by far so amazing. If you didn't get to see it, you missed one of the best performances ever was Willy Wonka over at Gayhead. And I just want to give Ms. Banta a huge shout out. She does amazing work every year, and I'm already excited for next year's.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Trustee Kellum.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, I, with Gully Stanford, he organized it, and other members of the Duchess County School Boards Association met with Assemblywoman DeeDee Barrett to express our hopes for, there's plenty of state aid and for an improvement in the state education department's schedule for approving capital projects and for more money for preschool special education. We had previously met with Assemblyman Beepin and with Senator, State Senator Rollison. So that completed our visits with the legislators. On Thursday, the Duchess County School Boards Association had, had a presentation by the consultant for the Lower Hudson Educational Coalition on the, the state aid and the prospects for what we would get. And then on Friday, I attended a webinar with the state, with NISBA, where we got lots of information from the state education department, the governor's office, the chairs of the assembly and senate education committees, and NISBA itself. Leading up to this Wednesday, I will be going up to Albany for Lobby Day, and we hope to again express our desires for good outcomes for Wappingers. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kellum. Trustee Miggitts.
Yes, and I'm going to go quickly because I know that we're running late on time. I want to thank Ketchum Racing for inviting us to their showing of the film Zero to 100 about the Winter Circle Project. And I just have to tell you what amazing marketing students these people are. Not only did they talk us out of some money, but they had full refreshments, ice cream, popcorn, water from some of their sponsors that was fully donated. That I, yes, that same, and Pius from the Winter Circle was there telling us how much he loves the two programs in Wappingers. That night was also senior night for boys' basketball and girls' basketball at RCK. It was wonderful to be there to see those seniors be honored. If anyone is looking for something to do Wednesday night, John Jay's boys' basketball team is having their senior night at John Jay High School. I also want to say that last Friday, Section 1 Wrestling Championships were held down at the Westchester County Center, and there are 11 students from the Wappingers Central School District who will be representing us tomorrow at the state qualifiers back down at the Westchester County Center. From Ketchum, at 116 pounds, Angela Batisto finished second. At 138 pounds, Michael Ricky finished fourth. What? Okay. At 170 pounds, Emile Corperin finished third. At 152 pounds, Jaden Turner finished fourth. At John, from John Jay, there were three first-place section champions. At 170 pounds, Brandon Della Pia. At 215 pounds, Michael Morrow, and I believe this is his third state year qualifying for states because I've watched him wrestle at sectionals in the past. At 131 pounds, Chris Molicon. Finishing in second place at 116 pounds, Christian Martino. At 160 pounds, Vincent Cantone. At 190 pounds, Danny Morrison. And finishing in fourth place at 152 pounds, Joey Magliolio. And I'm sorry, Trustee Johnson, what is it you want me to mention? Oh, yes. Futuref. Can you give that announcement, Mr. McFarland?
I can. I, I did reply on the website. Mary J. McFarland, that heads up the Future Farmers of America from John Jay, went up to Albany and her students got, I believe it was fourth place in the activities. So I just want to send a good shout out to all involved, all the people that supported her, and of course, the families of all the students. Thank you again.
I can add some additional information in regards to that. There are a number of individuals from John Jay FFA that'll be moving on to the substates based on their performance at the Leadership Development Event. So congratulations to all of them. Well done. Very proud.
Good, John. Trustee Morgan.
Before I get to, to my gymnastics comments, I just want to state that one of my New Year's resolutions is to get down to a weight so that I can wrestle as a high school heavyweight if I were of age. But anyway.
Aren't you? And your wife is younger.
She is, she is. Earlier this evening, two of our student athletes competed at the Section 1 gymnastics finals. Emily Belfiore from Royce Ketchum High School, as well as Emma Dwyer from John Jay. Emma qualified for the state meet to be part of the Section 1 team to represent us at the state meet. She is a sophomore at John Jay. This is her third consecutive year going to the, to the state meet. So congratulations to those student athletes. I also just wanted to, to mention, very happy to, to learn about the Community Foundation Grant that Andrew Nicola, one of our district's technology integration specialists earned, that's going to increase through 3D printing our students' opportunities to, to learn about engineering technology and the culinary arts. And then I just wanted to close with a, with a personal statement that I wanted to be on the, on the record, that, that I, I support our teachers here in the Wappingers Central School District and appreciate the work that, the work that they, that they do and the value that they deliver to our students. I make this mention because over the past couple of days, there was a prominent social media post that while raising concerns, from that person's viewpoint about the United States Department of Education, made negative comments about teachers. And I want to report that as, as an individual, I support and thank our teachers in the Wappingers Central School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Morgan. Trustee Lumia.
I don't know if it was mentioned before, but we had a robotics tournament at John Jay last, I think it was last Saturday, or before that, or before that.
No, that was the Science Olympiad.
The Science Olympiad. There were four teams actually. John Jay came in number, number one place, but there were three other teams. John Jay, two additional teams, a B team and a C team, did rather well, and so did Royce Ketchum High School. So we, we did an analogy, the, the other team, but we have actually five teams competing in the Science Olympiad. So congratulations to all those students and the teachers that are involved in that.
Thank you, Trustee Lumia. Anyone else? Okay, moving right along. 6.01, Consent Agenda Resolution.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. 6.02 and addendum 6.03, 6.04, 6.05, 6.06, 6.07, 6.08, 6.09, 6.10, 6.11, and 6.12.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Peggy Kellum. All in favor? Any opposed? 7.01, Process for Nominations to BOSI's Board of Education. You going to read that?
There's nothing.
You're going to read that?
It's information, just-
I'm going to read it, wait.
Yes, it has to be read.
It's got to be read into the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I? Am I allowed? All right. Here we go.
This year, there are three opening seats on the BOSI's Board of Education. Ralph Clementro from Spacken Kill has indicated that he will be a candidate for nomination and reelection for another three years. Gully Stanford, High Park, has indicated that he will be a candidate for nomination and reelection for another three years. There is a vacancy created by the resignation of Antoinette Halas from Poughkeepsie, whose term expires on 6/30/2026. The candidate and the third-most votes will serve the remainder of the vacant term commencing 4/23/2025 to 6/30/2026. The Wappingers School, Wappingers Central School Board of Education is, it so wishes, can nominate one or more candidate. The nomination must be held by Office Board Resolution. The nominees must reside in one of the nine component districts, Arlington, Dover, High Park, Milburgh, Pine Plains, Poughkeepsie, Reinbeck, Spacken, Kill, or Weebetuck. The nominee must not be an employee of any of the component districts in the Duchess County. Nominations are due by March 21st, 2025.
That's it. 7.02, that's it.
7.02, to attend the DTC Foundation Community Bridge to the Future Award Ceremony.
Whereas the Wappingers Central School District will be honored for providing critical support and enhancing the quality of life for students of Duchess Community College and others in the mid-Hudson Valley. And whereas the Wappingers Central School District is being recognized for such efforts as an honoree and award recipient at the Duchess Community College Foundation's Our Communities Bridge to the Future Gala on Saturday, March 29th, 2025, in Poughkeepsie, New York. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wappingers Central School District does hereby approve Board President Michael McFarland and Board Vice President Eddie A. Slowshower to attend the awards ceremony at a cost of $450.
Motion? Discussion? I'm sorry.
No, you have to motion.
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 Second.
Virgil Capillari, second by Mr. Lumia. Any discussion? Trustee Miggitts.
Yes, I realize that $450 within the scope of the Wappingers Central School District budget is not a great deal of money, but since this is an event where we will also be represented by Dr. Cardwell, who's on the committee, and by another board member who will be purchasing their own ticket, I think that saving nickels where we need to can save us money in the long run. This is not a $25 dinner. This is a $225 per person dinner. It's not something like conventions and conferences where there's educational information that people benefit from. I believe that we can accomplish the same outcome and save a little money if we send one of our officers to represent us at the dinner.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miggitts. So again, 7.02, we had a motion from Marie, second by Virgil Capillari. All in favor? Opposed?
Can I make a, I'll make this simple. As Board President, I would defer for you to attend the evening. Would that be acceptable for, if I make, if I'll change the motion? I'll amend the motion? To remove myself, so Board President? Correct. The motion, you mean?
So if we amend it-
Second the motion.
And change the amount to $225 and only allow Michael McFarland, the president, to attend, is that acceptable for the amendment? All in favor? So approved.
Very good, Eddie.
Thank you. 7.03, Approval of the 2025-2026 School Calendar.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby adopt the 2025-2026 school calendar as submitted by the Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Information Systems and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Trustee Kellum. All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. 7.04, Approval of the SEQA Unlisted John Jay High School.
Here we go. Whereas the Board of Education of the Wappingers Central School District, Board or District, is considering undertaking a proposed capital improvement project involving significant renovations and upgrades to John Jay Senior High School, including alterations and renovations to existing interior spaces and electrical, mechanical systems, building envelope improvements and exterior improvements, including addition of athletic field lighting, conversion of an existing natural turf field into synthetic turf- an existing natural turf field into synthetic turf, renovations to the press box, concessions building, and new parking for approximately 85 cars. The proposed action and whereas the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQA, and its implementing regulations, 6-NYCRR, Part 617, require that the district conduct an environmental review of the potential impacts of the proposed action prior to approval, including classifications of the action and the declaration of lead agency status. And whereas Part 1 of a full environmental assessment form, FEAF, has been prepared by the district's consultants to describe the project and its setting. And whereas, under the applicable standards of SEQA and 6-NYCRR, Part 617, the scope of the proposed action constitutes an unlisted action and involves one or more other involved agencies. And whereas the Board intends to act as lead agency for the SEQA environmental review of the proposed action to ensure coordinated review among involved agencies. And whereas the district's consultant, Weston and Sampson, transmitted the FEAF to potential involved interested agencies via letter dated January 31, 2025. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board hereby ratifies the letter dated January 31, 2025, and FEAF transmitted by the district's consultants. And further be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District hereby ratifies the proposed action should be preliminary classified as an unlisted action as defined in 6-NYCRR, 617.24, and its intent to act as lead agency for the coordinated environmental review of the proposed action. And further be it resolved that if no response or objection to the Board's intention to act as lead agency is received from the identified potentially involved agencies within 30 calendar days of the date the district's consultant transmitted Part 1 of the FEAF and requested coordinated review, the Board of Education shall assume the lead, excuse me, the role of lead agency for the SEQA review of the proposed action.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Peggy Kellin. Discussion. Marie Johnson.
Yes, as somebody that sits on the Capitol Committee, I want to just point out to the public and the rest of the Board, this is something we do before the proposition is even voted on by us. We have to go through a SEQA letter in order to even go forward. This is not saying that it's guaranteed that we do it, but in order for us to even go forward, to go to the public, we have to go through this process first. We've done this on every project before that we do this around this time. We do a SEQA letter before we even approve a proposed capital project. We've done this every other time before. In case anybody was concerned that this is a guarantee that we're going to go for this part of the project, it could still be taken out of the project. There's a lot of different things that go into it, but this is step one to even go in that direction. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Trustee Lumia.
I asked that question, she clarified, because it seems to me that the synthetic turf at John Jay, that's the actual soccer field, I believe, right? That's part of the Capitol project. Do we have to do the same thing for the turf field supposedly at?
There's more motions than it needs to be.
I'm sorry.
If everyone, I know Mr. Pedro won't like this, but I just say, same thing I just said, RCK, same thing I just said, but I can't do that. Now, I'll read it. It's fine. No, it has to be read.
Excuse me, Trustee Kellin.
Okay. I was formerly on the zoning board of the town of Poughkeepsie, and it's pretty standard when you have any project to ask for SEQA to be unlisted because this is really mainly affecting our property. If it were, had an effect on widespread situation, then perhaps some other or agency would ask to be, yeah, would, yeah, would ask to be the lead agency, but it's pretty routine.
Just add, just add.
Thank you for that information. So all in favor? Anyone opposed? So moved. 7.05 Approval of SEQA Unlisted RCK Roy C. Ketchum High School.
Whereas the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District Board or District is considering undertaking a proposed capital project involving significant renovations and upgrades to Roy C. Ketchum High School campus, including alterations and renovations to existing interior spaces and electrical, mechanical systems, building envelope improvements and exterior improvements, including addition of athletic field lighting, conversion of existing natural turf fields into synthetic turf, and eight new tennis courts. The proposed action and whereas the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQA, and its implementing regulations, 6-NYCRR, Part 617, require that the Board conduct an environmental review of the potential impacts of the proposed action prior to approval, including classification of the action and the declaration of lead agency status. And whereas Part 1 of a full environmental assessment form, FEAF, has been prepared by the district's consultants to describe the project and its setting. And whereas, under the applicable standards of SEQA and 6-NYCRR, Part 617, the scope of the proposed action constitutes an unlisted action and involves one or more other involved agencies. And whereas the Board intends to act as lead agency for the SEQA environmental review of the proposed action to ensure coordinated review among involved agencies. And whereas the district's consultant, Weston and Sampson, transmitted the FEAF to potentially involved interested agencies via letter dated January 31, 2025. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board hereby ratifies the letter dated January 31, 2025, and FEAF transmitted by the district's consultants. And further, and be it further resolved, that the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District hereby ratifies that the proposed action should be preliminary classified as an unlisted action as defined in 6-NYCRR, 617.24, and its intent to act as lead agency for the coordinated environmental review of the proposed action. And be it further resolved that if no response or objection to the Board's intention to act as lead agency is received from the identified potentially involved agencies within 30 calendar days of the date the district's consultant transmitted Part 1 of the FEAF and requested coordinated review, the Board of Education shall assume the role of lead agency for the SEQA review of the proposed action.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Peggy Kellin. All in favor? So moved.
I can't because there's different, there's different things within the SEQA projects.
7.06 Approval of SEQA Unlisted Wapinjor Junior High School.
Come on, one more time. Here we go. Whereas the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District Board or District is considering undertaking a proposed capital project, capital improvement project involving significant renovations and upgrades to Wapinjor's Junior High School campus, including classrooms, small gymnasium, technology and cafeteria building additions of approximately 35,000 square feet, alterations and renovations of existing interior spaces and electrical, mechanical systems, building envelope improvements and exterior improvements, including pavement replacements, athletic upgrades, and installation of athletic field lighting, a new press box, concession stand, and minor associated site work. The proposed action and whereas the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQA, and its implementing regulations, 6-NYCRR, Part 617, require that the Board conduct an environmental review of the potential impacts of the proposed action prior to approval, including classification of the action and the declaration of lead agency status. And whereas Part 1 of a full environmental assessment form, FEAF, has been prepared by the district's consultants to describe the project and its setting. And whereas, under the applicable standards of SEQA and 6-NYCRR, Part 617, the scope of the proposed action constitutes an unlisted action and involves one or more other involved agencies. And whereas the Board intends to act as lead agency for the SEQA environmental review of the proposed action to ensure coordinated review among involved agencies. And whereas the district's consultant, Weston and Sampson, transmitted the FEAF to potentially involved interested agencies via letter dated January 15, 2025. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board hereby ratifies the letter dated January 15, 2025, and FEAF transmitted by the district's consultant. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District hereby ratifies that the proposed action should be preliminary classified as an unlisted action as defined in 6-NYCRR, 617.24, and its intent to act as lead agency for the coordinated environmental review of the proposed action. And be it further resolved that if no response or objection to the Board's intention to act as lead agency is received from the identified potentially involved agencies within 30 calendar days of the date the district's consultant transmitted Part 1 of the FEAF and requested coordinated review, the Board of Education shall assume the role of lead agency for the SEQA review of the proposed action.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Peggy Kellin. All in favor? Anyone opposed? No. Motion. 7.07.
I promise, this is, this is the last one.
Approval of SEQA Unlisted Van Wyck Junior High School.
You think I'd have this memorized? Whereas the Board of, whereas the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District Board or District is considering undertaking a proposed capital improvement project involving significant renovations and upgrades to Van Wyck Junior High School campus, including classroom and cafeteria building additions of approximately 25,000 square feet, alterations and renovations of existing interior spaces and electrical, mechanical systems, building envelope improvements and exterior improvements, including pavement replacements, athletic field upgrades, and installation of athletic field lighting and minor associated site work. The proposed action and whereas the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQA, and its implementing regulations, 6-NYCRR, Part 617, will require that the Board conduct an environmental review of the potential impacts of the proposed action prior to approval, including classification of the action and the declaration of lead agency status. And whereas Part 1 of a full environmental assessment form, FEAF, has been prepared by the district's consultants to describe the project and its setting. And whereas, under the applicable standards of SEQA and 6-NYCRR, Part 617, the scope of the proposed action constitutes an unlisted action and involves one or more other involved agencies. And whereas the Board intends to act as lead agency for the SEQA environmental review of the proposed action to ensure coordinated review among involved agencies. And whereas the district's consultants, Weston and Sampson, transmitted the FEAF to potentially involved interested agencies via letter dated January 15, 2025. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board hereby ratifies the letter dated January 15, 2025, and FEAF transmitted by the district's consultants. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District hereby ratifies that the proposed action should be preliminary classified as an unlisted action as defined in 6-NYCRR, 617.24, and its intent to act as lead agency for the coordinated environmental review of the proposed action. And be it further resolved that if no response or objection to the Board's intention to act as lead agency is received from the identified potentially involved agencies within 30 calendar days of the date the district's consultant transmitted Part 1 of the FEAF and requested coordinated review, the Board of Education shall assume the role of agency as lead agency for the SEQA review of the proposed action.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second by Peggy Kellin.
Could you read that again, please? Could you please?
Did you miss a word?
I can't hear very well, so I'd appreciate if you read it again.
Motion as stated. Motion approved. 7.08 First. We voted. Yeah. Where you been?
Yeah.
Let's go to the videotape.
Because you chirping the whole time.
7.08 First reading of policies. It's a silent reading. Any questions? Please contact the chairman of that board, which is Peggy Kellin. Request for additional agenda items, 8.01. Any board members requesting for additional?
I move that we amend the agenda and add an item to add a resolution about a student-related
Marie Johnson, second by Peggy Kellin. All in favor? So moved. I'm sorry? 803, right? Yeah. Resolution to reject, confirm, modification, appeal to the superintendent.
Be it, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby upholds the decision of the Superintendent of Schools dated 1/22/2025, which endorsed the suspension imposed by the principal dated 1/3/2025 regarding student number 021025. And be it further resolved that the Board President is hereby authorized to sign the Board Determination Letter on behalf of the Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the district clerk is hereby authorized to mail the Board Determination Letter to the students' parents.
Motion, Marie Johnson, second. Mr. Lumia, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Trustee Miggitt abstains.
Yes, I wish to abstain to avoid any appearance of a potential conflict of interest in this matter.
Thank you for the clarification. So moved. You going to read that again, I guess? No?
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Laura Lee Abbey. I have two young children in the Wapinjor School District, and I'm a volunteer and co-founder of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, nonprofit organization, Defense of Democracy. We started this organization in response to the coordinated attack on public schools, which became amplified in 2022 with the rise of anti-government extremist organizations like Moms for Liberty. These days, we hear our federal government openly promising to defund our public schools and libraries, and they have made children, in particular those who are members of the LGBTQ+ communities, targets. Multiple school districts and representatives across the country have already issued statements rejecting Trump's recent executive order that directs schools to discriminate against transgender students. I am here tonight to ask you to do the same. We are a large school district, but more than that, we are a diverse communities of families who all want to see their children thrive. A statement issued by a school superintendent in another district reads in part, "On January 29, 2025, the White House issued an executive order entitled 'Ending Radical Indoctrination of K-12 Schools.' This statement calls into question equity work in schools, and it undermines our ability to support all individuals, including LGBTQ+ youth and educators in the school community." The letter continues, "To our students, staff, parents, and caregivers who are feeling frightened right now..." right now, please know that we stand with you. In our district, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility efforts have been the cornerstone of our strategic plan and vision." The letter goes on to give specific guidance to offer members of the district additional security by encouraging staff to share the message with their students and parents, and states specifically that the district will not change their inclusive practices. "I hope that you will consider issuing a similar statement to ally the very real concerns of a majority of parents in this district during this difficult time. I will send you an email with that letter tomorrow. Thank you so much."
Thank you very much for your time. Lisa? Lisa P.?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Lisa Popantonio. I'm also a volunteer with Defense of Democracy. I'm also a therapist, and I work with a lot of folks in this community. Um... I work with a lot of folks, a lot of students in this community and school district. Hold on, sorry. I really appreciate, Superintendent, you putting out a message to, to the community members and talking about what the plans are. Thank you for clarifying that, and I think a lot of parents and kids are going to be very grateful to hear that it sounds like you're really going to lean into the DEI programs that are already available, and work towards keeping it that way, and maybe expanding as well. So I really appreciate that. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna go out of order on the next one.
Carlos?
No, Allison, then we're gonna, we switched, if that's okay. Sorry.
Okay, Allison.
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to say something funny first. Your wife is younger than you. I do know that for a fact. And...
You only know that because I told you.
No, I knew that before and tonight. And Trustee Solschar, for any reason, if you do not rerun, could you just come back to be the sports commentator? Because that's the best whatever CEQA thing I've ever heard in my twelve years as a district parent. I do, I do have to say this, and I referenced this two weeks ago, that I've been around for quite a lit-, know a lot of you all the time. So if I, I'm in, no implication to insult anyone in my next statement, but I have a really hard time with the arguments of doing something that looks like a finally, a real final solution. I sat here eight years ago in the full house. You were on, I think, the committee ad. I mean, who was on the microphone promising all of these things? We promised smaller class sizes. I know what building you're talking about. There's an inclusion at Fishkill Plains that started the year with thirty kids. There's a kindergarten and a couple of your larger elementary schools with twenty-six. We promised, I'll give you the numbers of what you promised us, eighteen to twenty-two in K through second. Twenty-six was supposed to be the highest in elementary. In inclusion or not, it's inexcusable. And as for that wonderful list that you put together, Darren, those principals didn't even complain about everything. You have CSC chairs that have to have meetings in the building principal's office. So if a kid is in trouble, you got a principal in the office booking out, coming in. We have meetings at Brinkerhoff. You have to use the psychologist's room. So a kid in crisis, their safe space is gone. If annuals take place, and those families deservingly want an in-person meeting. And although I respect the way that we've done it post-COVID, where we give people the option, you have to change your date, because no one can find a room. You could wait two weeks for a meeting just on a space issue. It's, it's inexcusable. I have to thank you, Mr. Zip, on your interjection. The whole, what is the budget's gonna look like, I think it was not conveyed strongly enough. The amount of children, and, and, and not all of them can come back. Your residential kids are not gonna return. Your ED kids are on the long-term plan to return. But you're cognitively impaired. You're communitively impaired. And your, and your autism childrens that are presently in our communications, that we don't have more rooms, so some of them just go out because they're most severe, will come back. All that money saved goes back. I'm not projecting, because I don't want to flip anybody out. But I was, we're thinking about the now and the what could be. What could be is, in five to eight years, all those developments are built. But we have the potential to put fifth grade, because some have to do it. This whole worrying about, and again, you can find data for both points, that sixth grader, sixth graders are gonna be impacted by eighth graders. Everybody's got cell phones. They're all impacted by whatever they're exposed to everywhere. It's not the nineteen eighties anymore, where the big kids are teaching the little kids. Oh, God, I'm out of time. I had so much more to say. I'll come back next week.
Thank you very much. Carlos?
Good evening, guys. Some of you guys may know me. My name is Carlos Chuesma. I am a community member. I have five children in this district. Four of them go to one school. Out of my five kids, four of them have an IEP. So, as I sit here and I watch some of you guys argue about the need for the, the programs in certain schools, my daughter is severely dyslexic. She is in third grade. If she would have to go to another school, and she is comfortable with all the students that she currently is in the class with, she's been with them since UPK, since first kindergarten, first, second, and now third, I would have to move her to another school outside of our home school building, all the way to the other side. And what about my other kids? I think that they're all comfortable where they're at. And one of you guys, I've, I don't know everybody's name, I'm sorry, said, "Why wait for a rainy day?" The rainy day is already here. It is, the schools are packed. Why do we only have, as, Wappinger's has to, and I'm sorry I'm rambling, I'm trying to go in two minutes, because I'm tired also. We have to take care of the community, of the kids. One in five kids or students have a learning disability. Eighty percent of them, if they're not taken care of, they're gonna be a high school dropout. Or they can go, it's a pipeline straight, straight to jail, or drugs, or anything. And we have an opportunity now to make a change, not wait for these buildings that, all you have to do is drive around to see that we're developing on merit on, on three seventy-six, on Route eighty-two or fifty-two. I don't know the difference right now. We just have to make a difference now, not wait until something happens. So I'd rather be proactive than reactive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carlos. I don't see anyone else. Like to make a motion, ten point oh one, motion to adjourn.
Resolved, that the Board of Education does hereby adjourn the February tenth, 2025 Board of Education meeting. The time is now ten ten PM.
Trustee Johnson, second by Kellen. All in favor? Any opposed? I don't see any, so moved. Thank you.